Okay, I want to thank everyone for the patience tonight while we work through some technical glitches here on our new way to present our meetings here. I will bring the April 6th City Council Work Meeting in order. Does there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt my agenda for the special work meeting.
Tim makes motions in seconds.
Second.
Second. A discussion. Here it onto motion all favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Before we get started, I'd like to just talk to everyone real quickly about the city and how we are responding to the current coronavirus crisis that we have, the COVID-19. On March 16th, the city declared a local emergency action. This is consistent with the state's action a few days before and also the federal action. And what that did is allow the city to make some changes for personnel and protocol and basically to help prepare for what coming days we're going to be experiencing here. The first priority of our city is to protect our employees and our firefighters. That is our first priority in making some of these changes. And then our second priority is, in doing that, is also protection of our residents that do business with the city. And all the while, it's about keeping our city services flowing and keep providing the services as best we can through this crisis. So, one of the things that City Council did was shut down or eliminate all the use of the city facilities, the community halls, community centers, until further notice. And our parks are still open, the trails are open, all the playground equipment that is closed at all our parks. And again, we've been making changes to help get us through this crisis, particularly in the short term here. So, for our city meetings, we've gone to this virtual meeting. Again, apologize for some of the technical glitches to get going here tonight. The, so we're having these meetings, I am at City Hall, Mayor Steve Voss. I'm at City Hall here with Jack Davis, our city minister, our four council members, council members, Ronning, Harrington, Plazanz, and Urkel are all at home. And our fire chief, Marcus Charme, is in another location within this building. So, this is how we plan to present our meetings going forward. If they're, we're discouraging, we don't normally do this, but we're discouraging public attendance at our meetings. The meetings are still open to the public. So unless you have business with council on that agenda that evening, we ask that you do watch the meeting, whether it be on cable channel 10, or on our website, or on YouTube. So these meetings will be available. And if there's any comments or any suggestions that you have, please share with one of council members, or Jack, or the city, and we can work to make this a little better. So, in closing, I just want to say that, you know, that the actions the city is taking, we're working to encourage our residents to follow the social distancing and other recommendations from the CDC and the federal government. And we're working hard to do our part for our community, keep our community safe. Obviously, this crisis is real, we've seen it on TV, although I think a lot of folks may not understand that this is also local. This is here. We do have confirmed cases, and not only in our community, but in the surrounding communities. And, you know, we need to really be diligent about all this. So, with that, I'm going to turn the agenda over to our fire chief, Marcus Charme.
Currently, within the county of Anoka, there's forty, or zero, forty confirmed cases of the virus. You are correct, surrounding communities also have the confirmed cases of the virus. The fire department, I want everybody to know, is responding to medicals. We're just taking very careful precautions when we go on some of our calls, in fact, on all of our calls. In the past four weeks, there's been a decrease in calls, specifically medical calls. What has happened is that many people are either self-transporting themselves to the doctor and our hospitals, and not using the services of ambulances and firefighters. In other words, trying to keep their exposure as little as possible. The fire stations and firefighters were keeping the firefighters mainly to their own station, although once in a while, for certain things, firefighters do come in and take care of certain business, much like tonight where they're going through a fit test of the N95 mask. As far as personal protection equipment, sometimes referred to as PPE, we continue to look for more. We're not in a situation where we don't have enough equipment right now to protect us, but as we anticipate the increase, we have requested more masks and gowns and things like that to fit the needs. So, we've been working with Anoka County Emergency Management on those requests. At some point in time, and the numbers are all over the board, we look for a peak in the cases of the virus, possibly still three to four weeks out. And at that time, we'll analyze, you know, what we need for call responses and things like that. The sheriff's department has been a good partner. They also are very cautious on their exposure with their people. And Alina has been very good as far as only requesting us when we're needed.
Okay.
We're, just so you know, Mayor, we're also doing, we are doing firefighter training, but we're doing it online. We started that this week, and we'll be trying that out, and actually, I think that it's going to be a good tool for us.
Very good, very good. Is there any questions from the council regarding the fire department and what they're doing right now? Tim?
Mark, I just want to say thanks to you and your department for being on the front lines. I know these are difficult times, and I just want to make sure that you get the thanks you guys deserve.
No questions.
Okay.
I have a question. I wanted to know if somebody in East Bethel has the virus, or I know we had somebody in Isanty, or Oak Grove, or how close of a community somebody near us has it?
Mark, do you want to respond to that? Do you have the data up to date?
The Health Department, Minnesota Department of Health, has been very cautious about releasing specific information to the general public as far as where cases are. And there is a concern about HIPAA violations and, you know, patients, a patient privacy. So, with the privacy laws, HIPAA laws, I can tell you that we do have, you know, cases that are very close to us, and I'm not able to, you know, put an exact spot, address, or anything like that on it. I don't get the exact location, I get the general locations.
Yep. Sorry about that, we're going to switch computers. So, okay, Mark, did you want to talk about duty crew then?
Yes, I will. At this point, with our call volume, we're not asking to, or even thinking about starting a duty crew today. But as the cases, of the virus, the increase, there's going to be a time where we are going to be overloaded, and we have to start thinking of how we're going to respond to our emergency calls. And this is not just for the safety of the firefighters, but it's also for the residents to make sure that they're getting the help that they need. At some point in time, probably, it could be a couple of weeks down the road, I'm really not sure, it depends how fast we start spiking in the cases, and when the peak is going to occur. But at that time, to make a decision that we need a duty crew is too late. We have to be more proactive than that. We've been working on a plan where we'd like the council to take a look at it, and then be able, with direction, you know, from a council meeting, be able to implement it at any time that the cases have, warrant in the call volume warrants. What we're talking about doing is proposing a duty crew that would be a two-person duty crew. We're talking about 24/7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and plan on it for at least a month, four weeks, and try to get us through the peak and on the down slope. Most of the firefighters that we've talked to are thinking like a 12-hour shift, or an eight-hour shift would be the best for them. What we would do is, we'd anchor the duty crew at one of the stations, we might move that duty crew from station to station, depending on their trends and things like that. Duty crew is going to answer all the medical calls, they're going to also answer regular fire calls. The duty crew can also perform, when they're not on a call, some minor maintenance and truck checks and things like that to make sure that we can keep them busy. If at any time the duty crew feels that the call that they're going on warrants additional resources in either apparatus or personnel, they have the authority to upgrade that call and call in more help. One thing it's got to, should be noted, is that our fire stations are not suitable or capable for overnight sleeping. Even if we put cots out there, because of fire codes and building codes, we could not allow anybody to sleep overnight. So we'll have to make provisions for that. We're looking at paying the duty crew, which would be two people on shift at a time, their normal call-out pay. So, using an average of $15 per hour, the weekly cost would be somewhere around $5,000 plus payroll taxes and fees. What we like to discuss, what I like to discuss, is that we're able to continue to put the plan into place. And as I said before, when the call volume is high, along with the peak, the increase of the virus confirmed cases, that we're able to be proactive and act. We want to be able to implement this within 24 to 48 hours of when we deem that there's a necessity. We'd also consult the mayor and city administrator on that to help us make the right decision. We're planning on running the duty crew for four weeks. It could be less, could be a little bit more. I think what we do is we're flexible, we keep assessing where we're at, and certainly, you know, be able to make changes along the way. We don't want to start it too early, because we want to make sure we don't burn out our crew. We want our crew to be able to be reactive, and we want to be proactive in the planning. So, those are the couple of things that are going on. We have been working with Deputy Chief Anderson, Artie Anderson, and as far as all the schedule to work, and getting feedback from firefighters, and what type, which apparatus would be used. And we're quite confident, should we have to, we can implement it within that 24 to 48-hour period. The reason why it's important to be able to do that is, and get consensus from the council, and direction from the council, is that if we have to wait until, you know, a council meeting that might be 10 days off, we're already behind the eight ball, so to speak. That's why we want to talk to the council now, and see if this is something we're going to put in place.
Okay, well, this is going to, it's planned to be on next Monday's council agenda, this item, so.
Yes, it is, yeah. And it's planned on being on the agenda, and then certainly, you'll have some write-ups and some numbers. As I said, right now, it looks like it's going to run about $5,040 per week, plus payroll taxes to run it over four weeks, that's about $22,000, $23,000.
Mark, can you, can you just go over what the purpose and intent of doing a duty crew? What would be gaining or preventing?
It's kind of, it's kind of a multifaceted approach. Number one, we're still keeping our firefighters separated, and so we're not getting large amounts of firefighters that are together going to a call. And that's important, obviously, because of how this virus spreads. So by having two going to a call is going to be better than maybe having, you know, three or four. The other thing is, we're able to be much more reactive in answering these calls on a very timely basis. The other thing is, we realize that our firefighters could be themselves becoming infected, either, you know, via, you know, through the fire department, or just from home and work and things like that. And to be quite honest, you know, we're planning on only, you know, being able to draw during the peak of possibly only half of the firefighters at a time, you know, because we might have people who are sick, or their families might be sick, and they have to be home to help them out. So, that, this is the major thing of it. And being able to, you know, respond to our residents, and give them the service that they're asking for, you know, the aid and the help. But, so we're not only protecting, I think, our city, we're in our population in the city, but we're also really watching out for our firefighters, too.
Randy?
Do you have a process already in mind or in place as to how you're going to go about selecting the firefighters for these positions? And are you able to start that process now, so that if and when the mayor needs to declare this, these positions are needed? Or do you have to wait until, you know, this passes through council in order to make that, those decisions going forward? Thank you.
We're actually going through that process right now, of, you know, who's available for what schedules, and, you know, how we would actually assign schedules to the firefighters. So, we're about halfway through that process now, just on an informational part, you know, from the firefighters. That's why we're pretty sure that, you know, within 48 hours, we, you know, we could have a schedule that would be ongoing.
Suzanne, I'm sorry, I'm muted. Go ahead, Suzanne.
Okay, my question, I have a couple, actually. So, this is something that's only going to be put in place should there be a spike, is that correct?
Absolutely. Only if, only if we get the peak, if we start seeing the slide upward, and our cases start going up.
Okay, because I think some of the models have been wrong, and they keep changing them. And when you said the 10 days, I'm like, well, we could always just call a special meeting, too. So, I don't have a problem with putting it in the plan in place, but only if there's a spike, and it would only be in our community that you already service, is that correct?
Absolutely. Only if, only if we get the peak, if we start seeing the slide upward, and our cases start going up.
Okay, because I think some of the models have been wrong, and they keep changing them. And when you said the 10 days, I'm like, well, we could always just call a special meeting, too. So, I don't have a problem with putting it in the plan in place, but only if there's a spike, and it would only be in our community that you already service, is that correct?
Absolutely. Suzanne, it would, it would only be those two things, that the number of calls in correlation with the spike in the infected cases warrant it. And I can't give you what that number is, but, you know, we haven't seen it yet. The numbers we have right now, I can tell you, definitely do not warrant it. But that doesn't mean, you know, by Friday, that, you know, things might change, you know. But I don't think so, but I could see here in the next couple of weeks that, you know, we might have to go to something like this, where the numbers are high enough. But this is not a permanent thing, either. We're going to want to get, yeah, we want to get back to normals, just like everybody else, as fast as possible.
So, I think on our next city council meeting, we'll have more detail on this, and at that time, we'll be able to vote on, you know, how we proceed on this procedural-wise. I can't imagine, well, hopefully, we don't have this sudden spike this week. If that does happen this week, and the fire chief and the rest of us determine that, you know, we need to implement this now, that's something that is an option to do, and then we just ratified on Monday. But I expect on Monday, we'll somehow put some mechanism in place that we're all clear on, and then, you know, it's going to be important to be nimble, and be able to react quick, just as Marcus said, so.
One other thing, Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
By Monday, I should have a pretty good handle on the reimbursable part of this through FEMA. I did sit through a meeting today with FEMA directors, and the, through the international fire chiefs, and by then, I'll be able to give you a full report on, you know, the possibility of reimbursement, and how we'll do it.
Tom, you got a question? Tom, you're on mute now.
Mark, are you able to, is it permissible, are you able to say what degree these people are affected? Are they home, or are they hospitalized, or ICUs? The 40, I think you said?
Yeah, we don't, we don't get that information.
Okay.
Other than what I hear on the radio all day. You know, there, you know, as I listen to the radio all day, that, you know, you get a little bit, and it's not, you know, necessarily information, you know, factual information, so to speak, or, but you can hear what's going on there. So, it sounds like some of these people are pretty sick, and some people aren't.
The reason for the question is exactly that. If, it's kind of a measure of the degree of serious injury harm has been happening to people so far, and what, how that might affect what you're talking about tonight.
I think the message we take back from the information is that there are confirmed cases in the area, there just says, we're not immune from it, as rural as we think we are. So, it's, again, it's back to, you know, everyone staying diligent, and recognizing that it is here, so.
Yeah, absolutely, it's here, it is real.
Tim?
Say, Mark, I just, I know East Bethel's number one on your list, but if we do this duty crew, and one of our local, other cities around here ran into some trouble with medicals, would we respond, or we, you know, let them, let them be on their own?
Well, anytime, you know, we get a request for aid on a mutual aid, you know, we'll go ahead and help them out. We have met, several of us fire chiefs in the north Anoka County area here, over the past couple of weeks, and we continue to talk with each other. We've also talked about whether or not, you know, this is some, this duty crew, if that's something that we can do together, and, you know, there's been talks on that. The, you know, nobody's made a, nobody's made a request, you know, of us, you know, to cover for them, other than if they need help, we'll definitely do it. If that would, Tim, if that would become burdensome on us, you know, we'd let them know right away that, you know, we're going to, you know, going to have to work, you know, that problem. But, you know, we do keep our ears open to other cities, and our neighbors keep their ears open to what's going on here, you know, on the fire radio, so. But, yeah, we'll be there to help them.
Any other questions for Chief?
Mayor, am I excused, then?
Just hang on one second.
Okay.
Mark, leave your computer on, we're going to do a little shuffle here, Jack's coming your way, so.
No problem. No problem. I hear him.
Hey, Jack, this is yours. Jack, you're on mute.
Item five point O, on sale seasonal liquor license. Our current on sale liquor licenses are issued on an annual basis. Term of each license is July first to June thirtieth. For the twenty nineteen twenty twenty license year, we have issued eight of these licenses. Viking Meadows Golf Course holds an on sale liquor license and has requested the option of applying for an on sale liquor license for a seven month term. Viking Meadows Golf Course is a seasonal business and is closed for four to five months of the year. They are the only business with an on sale liquor license in East Bethel that operates on a seasonal format. They have requested a prorated license to run from April first to October thirty first to be applied their renewal for the twenty 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 twenty-one license year. The Minnesota Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement Division allows license to be granted for less than twelve months if approved by the issuing issuing authority. However, all liquor licensed issued by the same authority must be for the same license period. Allowance of a prorated on sale liquor license would require an amendment to city code. The cost of each on sale license is thirty-five hundred dollars for twelve months. This does not include the Sunday liquor sale license or the licensee investigation fee at three hundred dollars. A prorated license fee for Viking Meadows for an April through October term would be two thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents, as opposed to the annual fee total of four thousand dollars. Staff is seeking direction from council as to the request from Viking Meadows to amend the East Bethel Code of Ordinance, Chapter Six, Alcoholic Beverages, to the allow the issuance of the seasonal prorated on sale liquor license.
Any questions, Council? Tom?
The the requirement on our part is a an amendment to the city code, correct?
That's correct.
What, how much difficulty and what, was there any way we get across on that?
No, it it's perfectly allowable under state statute. The only city that we found around here that does that is Stacy, and they do some seasonal liquor licenses that are prorated over the term of the request of the licensee. All we'd have to do is amend our ordinance to allow this because currently our our ordinance says that the license is effective from June thirtieth to July the first. We would have to add a provision that allows the prorated license.
As food for thought, if we were to consider something like that, would be an as individual basis only. That's just a thought. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? So, Jack, you're, would this be on next week's agenda, then?
If 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 we're interested in amending the license and that's the direction, what we'll have to do is we'll have to schedule a public hearing for this. So this would be on the May, first of May council agenda and not on this next week's agenda.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see any objections, so you can proceed.
Thank you. Item six point O, April meeting schedule and Booster Day. Pursuant to President Trump's proclamation that the COVID nineteen pandemic is a national emergency, a limit on the size of gatherings along with a shelter in place order has been issued through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty. As a result, the town hall meeting in its current format would have to be canceled or rescheduled to a later date. There is the possibility of conducting a virtual town hall meeting if the logistics can be worked out in the timeframe available and a revised format can be developed that will still reflect the purpose and intent of this meeting. In addition to the town hall meeting, the city's Spring Recycle Day and the April Saturday Recycle Drop Off are still on the calendar. Both of these events are scheduled for April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty. As a consequence of the federal and the anticipated extension of the state's shelter in place order for non-essential activities, staff is requesting council consider canceling both of these activities. If this is council's inclination, this request will be added to the April thirteenth, two thousand twenty city council meeting for approval. City council has also received a communication from the Booster Day Committee indicating a recommendation for the cancellation of Booster Day for two thousand twenty. Their recommendation is due to the planning preparation, fundraising, contractual bookings, parade arrangements, advertising, and a number of event details that are ongoing and need to be completed or commitments received between now and mid-June. With no assurances to restrictions on public gatherings and more than ten persons will be lifted by the date of the event, along with the possible impact of the COVID nineteen pandemic on the public's enthusiasm for a large outdoor gathering, city council has been requested to provide their thoughts and opinions on the committee's deliberation to proceed with Booster Day for two thousand twenty. Excuse me, there there's actually three meetings here that are we're requesting direction on. Number one is the town hall meeting. The second group is the Spring Recycle and the Annual Saturday Drop Off Day at the end of April. And any thoughts or comments for Booster Day two thousand twenty?
Randy?
So I'm going to start with the town hall meeting. I think that currently we we have to cancel that. And as to whether or not we can develop an internet of of this meeting, I think it's gonna have to wait to see whether or not this is gonna be a protracted event with COVID nineteen. If it is, then I think that that, you know, council and staff is gonna have to do much more investigation into actually how to run a virtual meeting of that type. I know currently that we are not doing the public forum. If we were to do an event of a town hall meeting, I think, you know, the first place that we would start would be to do a virtual public forum and see how that would would play out in order to actually get some experience in doing that type of thing. As for the city's Spring Recycle Day slash April Saturday Recycle Drop Off, I don't have a problem with canceling that at this point either. I am curious, though, as to whether or not we could maybe reschedule that once the COVID nineteen event is has gotten under some some kind of control. As for Booster Days, I I totally get it. I mean, they just, I just don't see, even though it is still a few months out, that it's gonna be really hard to get people to donate for it and to set it up and to put different different events for that. So I I I'm I'm perfectly okay with the Booster Day Committee saying that maybe this this year they could move on. Now, I know that that I have heard from Dan Butler, who said that, you know, he is still considering maybe maybe running the golf tournament side of of this event and maybe push it back into maybe September. To me, I think that's that that might still be a possibility. I just don't think that at this time we have enough information, but I think that we should allow him to pursue that going forward if that's something that he thinks that he can pull off. And that's it. Thank you.
The the golf tournaments run by the chamber, so see, it just happened, it just coincides with Booster Day. So it's not really a Booster Day activity. So I I think leaving it up to them is is fine. Oh, Tom, I'll get to you in a second.
Excuse me.
I I agree with the Booster Days Committee recommendation. I don't, I certainly understand the planning aspect of it and how much work it gets takes to get there. And even if this goes away by July, there's no way we're gonna, you know, no way it could be set up up in time. And then I also agree on on the the town hall meeting that we cancel it and we may decide to have something later in the summer. But it's all about getting, the town hall is all about getting community together, which is obviously what we don't want to do right now. So, you know, we could, we could explore whether we want to try it virtual. But, you know, I I think it's probably worth another discussion here. Tom, you had a question?
Yes, the opinion, the key word here is intent, and it's not for me to determine intent by myself. However, the intent, as I know it, was never to eliminate public participation in any of these things. And even to the extent of virtual meetings and these sorts of things, it it would eliminate all but a few, it would seem. So that that's something to keep in mind as far as whether to do or postpone. Another thing is, we've all followed the media and we haven't even peaked yet. So once we peak on the downward trend, it's still gonna be a long time. Thank you.
Suzanne?
I think we, all those things should be canceled, except for the recycle days, because I went last month at the end of March, and, well, I don't think very many people went there. You guys, last month I asked about it and you said there was no problem. People stay in their cars, just drop stuff off. So I don't think the recycle day, the monthly recycle drop off should be canceled, but the booster days, of course, because it's really hard to plan for it and get donations and interact with all the people you need to interact with. The golfing thing, I thought golf courses were closed, so I don't know how, unless they open them by then, it kind of depends on how that's gonna work out. But that's my two cents.
Say, Jack? Jack, the 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 Saturday recycling last month, we canceled that, right?
No, we had the Saturday drop off day last month, but since since that time, the proclamation for gatherings of people in public places, it was reduced from fifty to ten. So our consideration last time was, you know, it didn't fall under that fifty threshold and that people, most remained in their cars, but with the severity or the the kind of increase in some of these cases, it might not be a bad idea. They can still go there and drop things off during the day. The Saturday drop off, hopefully, this will be the last month it will be canceled and it can reopen again in May. I think in order to meet and comply with the federal requirements and the state requirements and the intent of those, it might be good to follow that and just cancel it for April. That's my recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, the the it's it's definitely getting used during the week when it's not staffed. I mean, it's, there's someone there, every time I drive by, there's one or two cars that are dropping stuff off, so.
Yeah, and we we go down there every day, too, to make sure that nobody drops some stuff off out front and to keep it cleaned up, so.
Okay, Tim?
Um, I agree with Steve and Randy, you know, the town hall meeting, you know, push it back to a later date, recycling days. And I I'm along with everybody else on the Booster Days, you know, like I said, I'd feel uncomfortable going out right now and asking a business for any kind of donation. I mean, I know it's a restaurant, but I think every business in the city's been hit by this, so I think, like I said, just go back to, you know, to twenty twenty-one and make it bigger and better, hopefully.
Okay, so, Jack, you'll have us, well, I think you've got our consensus on things. We'll have it on the agenda for next Monday?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on this one?
Item seven point O, COVID nineteen employee leave. We've had two employees who reported symptoms of respiratory illness in March and were instructed to remain away from work, though they met the minimum Center for Disease Control guidelines for returning to their place of employment. In both cases, the employees were diagnosed with a viral infection and told to self-quarantine for a prescribed time before returning to work. During their self-quarantine period, they used their accrued leave time to compensate their absence. Both employees were also instructed to be examined by a doctor for return to work approval. Neither employee could be tested for the coronavirus nor showed continued symptoms of viral infection, and both met their doctor's return to work directions. As the city had no procedures in place to address this particular issue, and other cities have adopted policies in the past month that allow granted additional sick time to cover coronavirus quarantines or treatments, council may wish to consider one of the following options to retroactively address the situation of these employees. One of these is if an employee tests positive for the COVID nineteen or has been directed to quarantine for a fourteen day rather prescribed period, the employee will receive one hundred percent salary and benefits, will not have this deducted from his or her sick vacation time. If an employee tests positive for COVID nineteen or has been directed to quarantine for a fourteen day period, the employee should use all their accrued sick time, and if not sufficient, can be allowed to incur a deficit to cover their directed leave. It will be made up to leave accrual in future pay periods. That was option two. However, beginning April first, two thousand twenty, the Family First Coronavirus Recovery Act mandates that employees with fewer than five hundred employees provide paid sick time to workers. This applies if the worker is sick with or has been quarantined due to COVID nineteen, is experiencing symptoms of the disease and seeking medical medical attention, or is caring for a child in the event of a school closure or unavailable childcare provider, among other situations. Full-time employees are entitled eighty hours of such leave. This leave does not carry over from one year to the next. In this situation, and due to the city's order to the employees to self-quarantine per their doctor's instruction, staff is requesting council discuss this issue and provide direction as to an adjustment on the leave time used by those affected by the self the quarantine direction. This is also something that's so directed, we can put it on the next council agenda for approval. So what we're requesting is these two employees that had to compensate their leave with their accrue accrued benefits be paid retroactively with additional sick time. This is a standard policy among most cities in the in the metro area now. All the ones that I've talked to have done this for employees who had to incur sick relief time in March prior to the beginning of the FFCRA Act.
Hey, thoughts? Suzanne?
I disagree with the retroactive part, absolutely, because there's not, the regulation says it's effective April first and not retroactive. And I know a lot of people who had to self-quarantine because they went to their job and they had a cold, even though it wasn't a COVID kind of cold. So why is government getting special treatment and all the businesses in the state are getting an entirely different privilege? It's, I don't think it's right.
It's my understanding that this applies, in in this case, to employers with less than five hundred people. Private businesses do get, are eligible for reimbursement of these costs or tax credits, whereas government entities that qualify under the five hundred threshold receive nothing in terms of reimbursement. Of course, tax credits wouldn't apply to us, anyway.
So how come you're saying that? you want to use the law and yet it's not applicable to government? I thought you were saying the city itself had less than 500 employees, so therefore you qualify. But I'm not worried about qualifying at all. I'm worried about the retroactive part. I don't think we, because you can finagle something that you should do anything retroactively.
Well, no, I'm, I'm saying that the act went into effect on April 1st, so ongoing there. Everybody's required to give that 80-hour sick leave. Before March the 1st, they're not required to do it. So what we're looking at is most cities are just paying their employees retroactively through their own funds. Actually, these funds are already budgeted. So there's no additional outlay of expenses. So this doesn't have anything to do with the act. It's just compensating those employees that had to be quarantined or treated for coronavirus before April 1st. If the cities just go ahead and pay their, their expenses, their salaries and their benefits during that period.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah, this is one of those things that empathy goes is more, more important to me than penny pinching or such. Considering April 1st is the beginning, if we were to retroactive two people, the most we're talking about is eight days, 16 days for two people and there's holidays, weekends in there. So the cost seems to be minimal and I mean, for God's sakes, if somebody gets this horrible disease and we're gonna tell them, go someplace, that, that's not the way I don't believe any of us consider proper treatment of employees or anybody. And this is a life or death disease.
Randy?
So a couple of things. The first is that, you know, there have been some companies who have already put this in place even before this order came through. So I mean, it's not, it's not something that, that we would be doing that hasn't been done by, by other companies. Now, I don't know about other governmental entities, but I know that other, there have been companies who have done this before. I think the other thing is that we have to keep in mind is, look, this was unforeseen. Nobody saw this coming. At least before the beginning of the year where we were all going to have to maybe spend multiple days away from work and, you know, these two years, when they were told to quarantine, didn't really have a choice. I mean, you know, we pretty much told them they couldn't come to work because of this issue. There was no way for them to test. There was no way for them to basically get cleared in order to come into work. And I think, I think the last part, you know, kind of going a little bit to that empathy part that, that Tom was talking about is the fact that, you know, this is really a time where, you know, we can show some support for the employees that work under us and show them that we have, have support for all of them. So in my feeling, we should go ahead and cover these two employees even though it's before, you know, the April 1st Family First Coronavirus Recovery Act. And that's my opinion. Thanks.
And, and I would agree with that is, you know, we need to keep in mind the reason why, you know, we directed these folks to, to go on, on sick leave is the fact that we're protecting the rest of the employees that are in the office or in the maintenance department. And so it's, it was, the decision was made on, on the city's part to protect the rest of staff, both from a personal health standpoint, but also from an operational standpoint of, of, you know, not having more illnesses if there was one to go through our staff when, because last we want is have all our staff on at once. Suzanne?
That's my point. Every business in the state had to, if an employee came to work with so much of a cold, they had to self-quarantine for 14 days through the whole month of March. And they had to take PTO or their sick leave or whatever. That's every employer. And none of those employees can be paid retroactively. So I don't think we should do it either. I don't think government employees should be treated any more special. That's my hope, my point. I'm not incompassionate. I, I feel for all the employees in the state that are watching this and had to self-quarantine and had to take their own personal time off, their own vacation time, their own sick leave. And they can't go back and retroactively get a dime whereas the government is now going to take their taxpayer money and pay people to do that. It's wrong.
But I, I understand your point, but it, it's not totally correct that, that all businesses are, are handling the sick pay that way, but I understand your point. Tom?
Yeah, I guess before I would consider that very particularly serious. I would wonder what means we have of knowing that all of these other employees other than us have limited to April 1st only. And for two people and the cost we're talking about, as far as I'm concerned, take care of these people. That, that goes a long way towards goodwill as far as our employees, as far as how we take care of people within our community as also. Anyways, that's me. Thank you.
Well, unless anyone has anything else to add to it, I think this is definitely worthy to have on the next council agenda. And then we can discuss and debate it again at that point. Is there any other information anyone needs on this? To have that discussion at next council? Okay. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, that, that is to the end of our agenda. Suzanne, do you want to add something? Suzanne?
Not to that, I just want to add something and other information kind of thing.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I, um, know a guy who has a dumpster company and I put it out on thing and there were like 20 some people interested. And the guy coordinates with city administrator to get, find the place. But I was wondering if, maybe if all these people wanted to go in on it financially, if we could have it at a central place like the parking lot at City Hall. So that's my question for Jack.
What do you mean by a dumpster company, Suzanne?
It's a roll-off dumpster company. The guy takes anything except for hazardous waste and he donates it, recycles it, sends some to the Lenkofor and turns it into energy, that kind of thing. He takes everything except for paint and oil, hazardous waste.
Is this just a one-time event or is it?
Yeah, it would, one to seven days. It's the longest a dumpster can be in any place.
Can you give me the gentleman's name and let me get some more information and I can present it back to everybody?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll email you that tonight or tomorrow.
Very good.
Randy, you had something to add?
Yeah, I've seen that, that there was a group of residents who were talking about all pitching in and, and, and getting a dumpster. My feeling though is that I'm a little reticent about putting that on public property or the city's property because then there may be liability issues. Other than that, I mean, my feeling is, is that, that, you know, if, if a group of residents wanted to do this, I don't have a problem with that, but maybe they should find their own location in order to place it. I may not, I may not be upset though if, if say, you know, a neighborhood wanted to do this, whether or not we may not allow them to place that dumpster maybe on a city street rather than in a park or someplace else. Just a thought. Thanks.
My concern would be is whether or not that makes us a, a waste transfer station. Because that's basically what a waste transfer station is. But Tim, Tim, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I had some for other, either for you or Jack. Are they taking kids at Cavia Hills? I've had a couple of questions on that.
Yep, they, as of today, they have five, five children there. So the Cavia is operating. I don't believe they started their food service yet. They're waiting to see what's going on with the COVID before they start that. They're bringing in food for the kids, but they are, they are opening and they are taking, they are taking kids. Tom?
Yeah, the the dumpster thing, the real downside is something like that and you, there's no way of knowing if it would happen or how much it would be, is contaminants. Contaminated wastes or leakage of one thing or another. And that kind of sounds like a, for some people, that's going to be an opportunity to get rid of some crap they can't get rid of anywhere else. Thanks.
Hey, anything else, Suzanne?
I just want to say he does it all the time in all different communities. That's all.
Okay. Okay, with that, for, for those who were watching live tonight, we thank you for your, your patience. We struggled through this a little bit getting going. Our, our next council meeting, I assure, will go a little smoother in terms of the, of the video. But again, if there's any other suggestions, please send them into the city and we'll continue to make improvements. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Tim makes a motion, second. Suzanne makes a second. A discussion, all in favor of motion to adjourn, say aye.
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 Okay, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.